Good evening and welcome to the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, July 22. If you are watching live on Monday, July 22, we encourage you to call in if you have comments or questions. The call-in number is 769-1677. We are starting tonight at 7:00 PM instead of our usual 8:00 because one of the primary items on the agenda is a presentation by Benchmark Senior Living. They have, as you can see, a bit of an AV setup to set up, and so it worked out better to set up early and start the meeting at 7:00. So, the presentation and indeed the entire meeting that you'll see tonight is available, obviously, live both online at PCTV76.org and also on Verizon and Cablevision Cable TV. And within a day or so, the tape of the meeting will also be up available on an on-demand webcast at PCTV76.org, and that is bookmarked by subject. So, if you are specifically interested in the Benchmark presentation, you can bounce through it and ignore the rest of our blathering. So, our next regular meeting is Monday, August 12, back at a regular time at 8:00 with a work session at 7:00. As long as I have a captive audience with a few more people, let me just make a couple of announcements, and then we can have some more announcements afterwards. The first is I just wanted to thank the zillions of people who assisted us with the 9th Annual Pleasantville Music Festival last weekend, and first and foremost among them, the volunteer co-executive directors, Rich Sarfetti and Saul Skolnick. Despite the fact that the weather looked grim at 10:00 AM on Saturday, the skies parted and we had a successful day, really a very good day for the Village of Pleasantville. I can't count the number of people who have said to me this year as well as in past years, "Wow, this is an extraordinary event for a village this size to run." And thanks go primarily to Rich and Saul, but also to Patty Dwyer and the entire village staff. Everybody pitches in in extraordinary form, and also the raft of volunteers who helped us as always. Special shout-out to the Pleasantville Recycling Committee that mustered a zero-waste program, did an extraordinary job with a whole long list of volunteers, so a great day all the way around. We've talked at every meeting for the last several meetings about the problems we all know that have existed for a long time on the Somala River Parkway with flooding between Grant Street and Marble Avenue. I mentioned that we had a meeting at the County Executive's Office to sort of establish a united front on this a few weeks ago, and this week Patty Dwyer and Chief Love and I attended a meeting at the county offices with Bill Gordon, who is the acting regional director for the Department of Transportation in our region, had included the county executive briefly, and the deputy county executive as well as the chief of staff, the county transportation commissioner, as well as representatives from the county police. And I think we have definitely got everybody's attention. It's premature to say exactly what will be done. It's clear that a long-term permanent fix is a very expensive venture at an era when the state is short of funds, but I would say there are some glimmers of hope about long-term solutions, and heavy pressure applied on everybody's part about producing a short-term mitigation. So, stay tuned. I hope we'll have better news to report about that pretty soon, but I can tell you that it's a subject on everybody's agenda every week, and I think we're making some decent progress. And then lastly, we have had a number of inquiries, and you've seen a number of reports lately about coyotes. There were several coyote sightings on Washington Avenue, and it's a regional problem where coyotes are finding their way into areas that wouldn't normally be thought of as coyote habitat. But we've got a flyer that was put together by some animal behavior organizations, and we'll put it up on the website at Pleasantville-NY.gov. The key takeaway from that is that coyotes are by and large shy animals, and if you see one, you should make a lot of noise and throw things at it like rubber balls, basically hazing, as they call it, that being quiet or running the other way is not the thing to do, that making a lot of noise, making a lot of fuss, and causing a general commotion generally gets them to leave. But a big takeaway is please do not feed your animals outside. Leaving out dog or cat food outside is an invitation to a coyote deciding your neighborhood is the place to live. So, we'll put that up on Pleasantville-NY.gov. So, the main event tonight is a presentation by Benchmark Senior Living. They have, as you know, made a proposal for an assisted living project that would be built on the vacant wooded site adjacent to the Methodist Church on Bedford Road near Maple Hill. They've been back before us a number of times. The project would require a zoning change in order to be permitted, and I think all of you in the room are pretty well familiar with it. We have posted all the documents that they have thus far presented on our website at Pleasantville-NY.gov, and we will post tomorrow the documents we've received tonight, as well as a copy of the presentation that will be presented tonight. So, anybody who wasn't here or would like to go back to it and read it again, or look at it again, has multiple ways of doing so, either at Pleasantville-NY.gov where you can download those items, or to review the meeting again at PCTV76.org. So, it is not my thought that we'd spend a lot of time tonight discussing what we see. Patty Dwyer's had a preview of this in working on the AV setup that they would need, but none of the board members have seen this, so we will be seeing tonight what you all see for the first time, and I think that it makes sense for all of us to digest it before we respond. That said, if people have comments they'd like to add to the record tonight, we certainly would welcome that, so long as we recognize that there will be an occasion soon to get feedback from all of you after we've had a chance to digest all of that. So, with that in mind, I invite Benchmark to get started.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. My name is David Cooper from the Law Firm of Zarin &amp; Steinmetz, representing Benchmark Senior Living. We're here, as the mayor said, on the petition to amend the zoning code and to rezone a portion of 70 Bedford Road to the elder care community district, as well as that undertaken to facilitate the development of an 87-unit assisted living facility on the property just mentioned. We're here tonight in the continuing review of the SECRE process, as well as because this board is the board with the authority to grant the petition, the zoning portion of this project or this action. Let me introduce the team with us tonight. It's a large team tonight. As you can see, we have lots of items to present. With me is David Steinmetz of Zarin &amp; Steinmetz, also Bill Cook, who's the project manager from Benchmark Senior Living, Jim Ryan, Rich Pearson, and Anthony Guccio.
So, I've got to interrupt here. I met Rich Pearson tonight, and for the benefit of the record, he no longer lives in Pleasantville but is believed to hold the record for most points scored by a Pleasantville High School basketball player. That was 48 points in 1978, so welcome back.
You stole my thunder on that one. It was actually in my notes, but yeah.
All right.
And actually, the video is all his highlights of...
If the traffic study has a lot of 48s in it, we'll know it's questionable.
And also, I should mention Diego Gonzalez, who is the designer and IT professional on this...
Never played for Pleasantville High School?
Not yet.
No, exactly, exactly. The purpose of tonight, obviously, this board, you're serving as the secret lead agency, and so you must make a determination of the environmental significance or potential environmental significance of this action. The action, of course, being both the rezoning, the petition that's before you, as well as the subsequent development of the parcel. In this case, the review is combined. We've already provided you with a long EAF, as well as you've gotten comments from the planning commission back from April. We've obtained some initial thoughts from this board, from obviously from the planning commission and from your professional consultants. We're endeavoring to supplement the record that's before your board already, which we submit will support a finding that this action, both the rezoning and the subsequent development, will not result in any significant or potentially significant adverse environmental impacts. We submitted a rather comprehensive package to you last week, including revised site plans, preliminary grading and landscaping plans, revised traffic and parking assessment, a portfolio comparison which deals with the density and the market demand for this type of facility and why its size, the way it is, as well as a revised text amendment which incorporated a lot of the comments that you've received and we've received as well, from your planning commission and some from your professional consultants as well. Tonight, of course, the big item is the visual analysis, which we will get to in a second and I'll turn it over to Jim in a minute. But before going into the visual analysis, I just wanted to take a second to talk about the process moving forward. We hope that this board will be in a position to make a determination of significance under SECRE within the next 60 days. Certainly, there's a lot that's been presented to this board in the last week or so, and we understand that the board wants to read it and really digest it and talk it over with its professional consultants. What we would like to do at the end of this meeting is certainly hear from your board as to whether there are any other impact assessments that you feel are necessary before this board will be in a position to make a determination as to whether there are any potentially significant environmental impacts. So, before we end tonight, I will come back up and ask the board that. So, please, you know, after we discuss obviously the visual analysis and all the other assessments that are before your board right now, we will ask the board just to give us any insight on what other studies it would like to see. We know that there's still stormwater that needs to be, a stormwater management plan that needs to be discussed, and anything else that we would need to provide you. We envision obviously coming back to your board, hopefully in August, with stormwater, as well as any answers to any questions that your board has tonight, and any comments that your consultants will have, such that August you'll hopefully have the entire record before you, so you can make some determination. Obviously, one of the critical questions that this board has asked, that the planning commission has asked, and consultants have also asked, is from a visual perspective, will this use be compatible with surrounding uses? That's one of the comments from the planning board, planning commission comments. And that's really the purpose of our visual assessment tonight, is to take you through how this facility will look at this site. And, you know, obviously, the initial thought of, well, putting a facility at the intersection of Maple Hill and 117 may seem daunting from this perspective. When you see the visual, we submit to you what you'll see is actually the topography of the site, the screening capabilities of the site really make this particular portion of the site an appropriate place or location for this type of use. Obviously, me standing up is saying one thing, but I think when you see the views that we've been able to create from both satellite picturing from Google Earth and Google Street View, and modeling, actually plopping on the model onto these views, it's really an amazing assessment and really gives you a comprehensive view of what this will look like. So, without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Jim and take you through...
Can I ask one thing, David? Would it be helpful to highlight the changes in the project that you highlighted in the letter to us?
Yeah, Jim will do it.
Okay, fine. I don't think yet, I think we're still in that.
I'm going to let my associate Anthony do that. He's more familiar with nuts and bolts in a plant.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if the board would like to...
Yes, well, is it time to come around?
You guys want this little podium? Would that be helpful?
No, I think it's okay. Thank you.
Do you like or part of that hill?
I think the first part of it is there.
Okay. All right. I'll stop.
Can everybody see the board now? Okay. I might be in the camera's way. Okay, so this is the site. The red line outlines the 5.9 acres that's currently occupied by the Pleasantville Methodist Church. The proposal is to take, where this magenta line is here, to take that and subdivide the northern 3.9 acres from the site to create a development which, as David had said, would be an 87-unit, three-story senior living facility by Benchmark.
Does that line reflect what you would buy from them?
Yes, from this line north.
Okay, 3.9 acres.
The facility right now is proposed to be three stories. The previous application was for a four-story building of 51 feet, 50 feet. This would be a three-story building now, which would reduce to 39 feet. That's a one-story reduction and 11 feet shorter than previously proposed. Now, there's a system of retaining walls around the site. At the rear, there's a double retaining wall. At the front, there's a proposed retaining wall above the existing retaining wall that you're all familiar with along Bedford Road. The retaining walls really provide a nice opportunity to nestle the building into the site, creates a flat area here to develop the building, the access roads and the parking. Got about 60 feet of grade change from the rear of the site to Bedford Road, and what this does is step down two tiers of about 12 to 15 feet each, which lowers the building in relation to the residential neighborhood, to the rear, and then it's raised above Bedford Road with approximately 6 to 8 to 10 feet existing wall, and another 6 to 8 to 10-foot wall, depending on where you are, along the front. The site will be extensively screened. There's existing wooded areas, the whole site is wooded right now, and we will save as many of those trees as we possibly can at the perimeter of the site. Existing trees that you see here in the wooded area will be maintained. There'll be a new landscape screening proposed here. You see these bluish trees would be evergreen trees that would be added to the site to further screen. In addition to the two tiers of retaining walls adjacent to the residences, as well as the landscape screening, we're now proposing a six-foot-high solid fence on top of the upper retaining wall. So, those items together would really help to address the concerns we've been hearing from the board, as well as some of the residents with the views into the site, and I think the model will really depict how the screen will be quite effective in reducing views into the site. Access to the site. The original proposal and the original plan was to access Maple Hill Road through the church parking lot. We've now modified that. We met with the residents very early in the project, and one of their concerns was that we did not put additional traffic onto Maple Hill Road here. So, what we've done is developed a new driveway that accesses the site here on Bedford Road, comes up the hill, and gets the elevation at the front of the building here. That way, we don't put any new traffic associated with development onto Maple Hill Road, addressing one of the major concerns of the residents at the time. We met with them earlier in the year. The site will be heavily landscaped. In addition to the evergreen screening, it'll be very attractive landscape throughout the site. It's very important for this to be done with a quality landscape, because this will be home to the residents that live there. It's also been shown in studies that the elderly and frail type of people that often live at these residences really benefit from the therapeutic value of an extensive landscaping design, which would include fragrances, textures, colors. It creates a connection with nature, which really has a good therapeutic value. So, we will take great care in designing the landscape for this facility. Oh, finally, stormwater. We're now working on a stormwater management report. As David had mentioned, we're going to address water quality, water quantity issues in accordance with the requirements of the town, as well as the DEC, and that we anticipate to submit in advance of the next meeting, and we can go over that then. I think that pretty much wraps up the plan. It'd be good time to probably see the visual.
I have one question. You had mentioned in the letter about the lighting and the party lot at that.
Yes, we did give a preliminary lighting design for the project. We're proposing right now 18-foot-high light standards. They would be downshining lights. We would design them so it did not spill onto the adjacent properties. They'd be cut-off fixtures, dark sky compliant, and we would make sure that with the way it's designed facing into the site and not spilling onto neighboring properties. And at evening, the lighting be brought down to a security level on timers, so that it would not disturb the residents at the perimeter of the site.
All right. Thank you, Anthony. I'm going to talk a little bit about the simulation tool that we have and that we are very much thrilled to present to your board. This is a new tool. It's a tool that we're starting to use quite often. It involves 3D simulation of the site plan, the building, to better understand how this particular use will fit into this property. This uses really a combination of programs. We're using architectural information that comes directly from the design architects on the building. We are using Google Earth and Street View to do certain verifications on what's occurring around the perimeter of the property as we set it in. We're striving for a high degree of accuracy. The topographic information that we're provided with is onsite topographic information from our surveyor. It is accurate, and what you're going to see is really a model that essentially looks at all of the issues that you might encounter in your design, in your grading of the site. From a visual perspective, it also gives you a certain idea of what the visual quality can look like of the building. I'll settle a few parameters here. The model that we're going to show you is actually, we're going to have two parts of the presentation. The first part of it is essentially a video that we're going to play. What we've done is we've taken a look at this model from a street view, and you're going to notice a couple of things on the model. You're going to notice that the buildings, we did not take the opportunity to enhance the buildings in terms of their color. The color of the building is striving for somewhat of a plain vanilla-looking building. It is accurate in terms of the architectural look to the building, that is the rooftops and the general features of the building, as well the buildings that surround this too. We've identified the closest buildings and created this model that essentially captures an area within a short distance of this particular property. Again, the purpose in doing that is that we're not wanting to highlight at this point those characters of the building for discussion. There will be a point where this model can be enhanced even further architecturally as we go through the various reviews to take a look at that, and I think you'll understand a little bit better when we turn this on and let it go. So, Diego, if you can run the animation. This animation is about a two-minute loop animation. We're going to stop it, slow it down, it's four minutes, I'm told. We're going to stop and slow it down. Keep in mind that we can go back at any point on this particular model, but after we're finished with this video, we can actually take any members of your board anywhere on the site within a certain distance to look from various perspectives as to what perhaps the neighbors might see, what might be seen from adjacent roadways. The other limitation that you'll see on this as we run it, and Diego, you can start to run it, is that... Okay, we're going to start by slowing it down right here. So, we're out at the main road. We're running along the... Okay. We're running along, and we're going to stop at the driveway at about where you can see the church on the right-hand side. There are stone walls. These are depicting the accurate height of the stone walls on the left, and you're starting to pick up the existing stone wall on the right side. You all know that wall. It varies anywhere between four to six feet, and then increases, I believe, up to about 12 feet. So, we're going to slow down again here. So, what you're starting to see as we're running along the roadside, along the frontage of the property, you're starting to see the Benchmark facility on the upper right. You're going to see trees in the foreground. Those trees are actually taken right from our tree survey, so with regard to the height, the general height and character of those trees, we tried to pick that up with a degree of accuracy. So, we're going to continue along the frontage roadway, and you notice on the right, the wall starts to increase in elevation. Again, this is the wall that exists there. This is not a proposed wall. So, we're going to continue traveling around the frontage of the property. We're going to head over to the north side of the building, where you start to pick up the existing residential property. So, we're going to slow down right here. We're going to raise up in elevation a little bit, because this is a look at the property from north towards the existing building. Stop right there, Diego. So, what you're going to see here is that we can actually simulate the trees that are existing on the property. We're picking up remnants of our proposed stone wall, and we're picking up some proposed vegetation. I'll just point out, as we start to show some evergreens along the perimeter of the property, those are proposed evergreens. We also have the benefit of being able to try and locate them where they're going to have the most benefit in terms of screening of this facility. So, we're going to continue around the building, again, looking from the north towards the building. We're pulling back a little bit, and you're going to notice one thing here, Diego, if you can just stop for a second here. In the extreme foreground, you're seeing lawn area. The other limitation at this particular point is we're not attempting to show the trees on off-site properties. The reason for that is although we know that they exist from examination of Google Earth and some of the other resources, and just having been around this site, walking this site, we couldn't pick out locations for specific trees. So, what we felt was important is to show where the property limits were, show the vegetation on our property, and show you that there, although there is a lot of vegetation on the adjacent property, it'll show as green lawn in some cases. So, we're going to continue along the back. Now, if we slow down right here, as, stop right there if you don't mind, you're going to now pick up a new portion of our proposal, which is a fence line. Your code allows for, I believe it's six and a half feet of fence, so we've added for further buffering and screening. Again, from the north side, we start to pick up the fence, which would be the top of the upper wall. Okay, continue. And now, we're going along to the backside of this property, and you'll see on the left side, you just caught a glimpse of it, a location of a property line. So, stop right here. Okay, so what we're also showing here is the property line. Now, again, if you examine Google Earth on this particular property, if you walk the perimeter of the property, you know that that's not green grass there. That's heavily vegetated area as well. But again, what we're trying to do is show with the degree of accuracy that we're able to, the onsite trees. So, these are accurate onsite tree locations. Again, you start to see the fence, and we're going to move topographically around the backside of the building. You did catch a glimpse of existing residents, and stop right there, Diego. So, we're essentially still on our property. We're within what you saw is the white property line. If you move to the back of where I am too, you start to see existing residents in the back. So, again, there's the property line, Diego, if you stop for a minute here. We're picking up existing residents on the left-hand side, and you'll see, we'll come back to those in just a moment. You're starting to see some additional vegetation supplement existing, but I think what's going to, I think, be most important is when we come back to the site, you'll see what we're doing onsite in terms of retaining walls and the look of this building. As Anthony had indicated, this is a three-story building, but essentially, from a visual standpoint, from the eastern side of the property, you're only picking up perhaps a story of the building visually. So, continue on. Again, we're pulling away from the building. You see the fence, and we're coming up on the existing church property here. That is a, stop right there, Diego. That is an accurate representation of the church massing. We did put the steeple on it for recognition, but we pulled away from the development portion of the property. You do see what looks like lawn area. We'll keep in mind that that is a heavily treed area, and we'll show you some photographs of those areas as we come back around the building. Diego, continue. Okay. So, what we're going to do is we're going to come completely around the church property here, and then we're going to go in the site, so you can see what's going on on the property. So, this is the, coming up, this is within the church parking lot, and coming up to our access driveway. So, we're going to stop right here. One of the things that Anthony had said in his presentation is the relocation of the driveway. Again, that was an important comment that we received. We have been working, and Mr. Pearson can talk about, we have been working with the DOT on this access. We believe that it's a viable access. The input that we have from the DOT, they believe it's a viable access as well. What you're going to see here is the grading with the retaining walls coming up to what Anthony described as a flat plateau of the property. So, Diego, if you continue. Okay, so now, we're coming in, a drive along the property. We're a little bit above driver's eye view coming into that. One of the nice things about this, because there's no doubt that this is a fairly substantial building, is that the view, both from the frontage roadway and as you're coming in, is of the short side of the building. So, again, this is the building in character. The color is not what we envisioned for the color. We're going to have quite a bit of landscaping, but we wanted you to get the feel for the massing of the building. So, with regard to architecture, it's still in preliminary stage, but this is a general look in terms of the height and character of the building. We're going to come around to the backside or the north side of this building right now. We'll stop right here. You'll see the retaining walls. Again, we're benching this into the property. It's sitting low on the property relative to the other buildings, and you'll see this line right here. That's the fence that we're proposing. That fence is still in discussion in terms of the look of that and the... That fence is still in discussion in terms of the look of that, and certainly, we'd work with your board, planning commission, and the neighbors as well in terms of the look of that if this should go forward. So, again, the building is sitting in that benched look. We do have the retaining walls in the back, which Anthony had described. And now, we're moving forward into the back portion of the building. This is the utility side of the building. This is where we would get deliveries. And you can see one of the advantages here with this building sitting very low here that we have a great deal of screen, screen cover between the fence and the retaining wall, and the opportunities for vegetation in the back property line to screen this area. Although this is an area for deliveries, essentially back of house, it's also important to realize that this is a very residential building, and so, we'd look to keep those impacts to a minimum in total, again, recognizing that these are people's homes. So, we'll conclude with really an aerial view of this portion of the presentation. Slow it down just a little bit here. So, you can keep moving around the building so you get a sense of a 3D analysis of what actually is on-site plan. And I think it certainly helps us as designers to understand what we're doing, and hopefully it helps your board and the planning commission, too, in terms of an assessment of whether this is the proper location for this. But you can see the perimeter. We're trying to maintain, as Anthony had said, as much of the vegetation as we're able to. Important to us, too, and we will be supplementing that vegetation because, again, that's a critical part of the plan. Landscape will progress around the building, so you'll see further enhancement in terms of the look of the building. Diego, you want to complete this portion? So, a couple of things that I think that we can do, depending on what the trustees would like to do. Let's go into another mode and just show the opportunities that your board might have. If there's anything in particular you'd like to see, we're just going to go into another mode. Okay. So, from here, Diego, my colleague, can really take the visual from a number of portions, a number of different perspectives here. Diego, let's go into the back roadways, adjacent property roadways, to give you an idea of what we can do. Sure, absolutely. Sure. Yes.
You maintain the existing trees along Bedford Road.
Yes.
Further north, but not in this section from the driveway to the first tree. What's going on there?
Okay. From the driveway coming into this portion of the property. Yeah, that's an area where we're grading this area off. You're talking about, if I may, right in this area here.
Yes, and all the way up to the first tree.
Right. We'd be looking to enhance that area. Right now, it's a graded area. We don't have any specific plans. You know, we do want to enhance some of the visual because we do, we're very proud of the building that we're going to put here. There's no need to keep a full visual corridor, but we'd like people to see what's up there, but we certainly can.
Just to get to that point, is that, in some sense, a marketing gesture? When people see the building and realize it's there?
I think in fairness, that's part of, that would be part of the plan, but there's no reason that we can't add additional landscape along Bedford Road to further enhance it. I don't think it detracts from what we want to show there. Right now, that's just a graded area, but certainly, we have no issue. You do see the dotted line there, so that's the separation between, is that the property line? No, that's just a shadow line.
I assume, obviously, you're on Earl's State here, but there would be some sort of a sign.
Yes, yes. Okay. So, let's take this out to, up a little bit so they can see the adjacent buildings. Pull it back just a little bit. Okay. Okay. So, you see where the property line is? And so, what we're doing now here is essentially going from a visual down at one of the existing residents back here. So, we have an opportunity, if the board needs it from any particular perspective, from any particular home or from any particular roadway, to be able to show you what the visual would look like so we can assess what we might do in some instances, supplement. But again, important.
Question, question.
Sure.
You just, a moment earlier, there was a corner of a porch.
Yes.
That appeared in this sort of foreshortened view, almost on its own property line.
Yeah.
There isn't any condition like that, is there?
There actually is. Diego, just pull back so you can show the mayor. You want to show the, what we're showing. Just turn it, rotate it, please, to show these adjacent homes the other way.
So, is that house?
It does exist.
Not that close to its property line?
That is exactly where those houses are.
And am I correct, also, in the view you show originally, the printed, mounted print, it looks as though some of the backyards encroach into church property.
They do. There is an encroachment of lawn area into the church property.
So, in round figures, is most of the area between the white line and the trees you show also forested?
I believe it's vegetated, some of it's manicured landscape around the perimeter.
There is more there than what we need?
There absolutely is, and I think that was an important feature. Now, we could start to look at the individual vegetation if it came down to an issue with these residents. We tried to get the massing right on these houses. The locations are absolutely accurate. The topographic information is absolutely accurate. Property line is accurate. The vegetation, there is a substantial amount of vegetation, particularly between some of these homes and the property. But there is lawn area in the back of some of these, that some of that lawn does encroach onto the property. I don't.
Which means that we do have opportunities of additional landscape.
We do, we do. But we thought it was important, too, to get a perspective. We were looking from the roadway. Why don't you go to the, Diego, to the outer roadway. That's on the adjacent property. So, we can pull back the visual to the cul-de-sac. Let's go down to the cul-de-sac here. And I think what I'd like to show you is, we'll get a perspective. We took some photographs of the board to get a glimpse of what actually is occurring. So, we're going to set right down to the cul-de-sac.
Do you want it street elevation or you want it being covered?
Well, I want it at street elevation, so you got to drop it down right onto that cul-de-sac line. So, I don't know if we can turn on the lights momentarily just to give the board an idea. I think it's important. Okay. Okay. So, Anthony, you want to take them through this?
What we've done is taken some photographs of really views from some of the right-of-ways around the site, looking towards the site. These upper six photographs are views from Maple Hill Road. You could see here, we're looking at the end of the cul-de-sac, kind of where Jim just took you to. And as you can see, the video simulation doesn't have any of these trees that lie outside of our property. If you look at it, it's really quite a wooded environment. It's very natural, and obviously, all these trees off our property would remain. So, there is a lot more screening existing from the existing right-of-ways than is actually depicted in those, the video. Because what the video was, was really taking our survey trees that were eight inches and larger that are required to be surveyed and just putting those trees. There's a lot of smaller stuff and a lot of stuff that falls outside the property that you can get a better feel for the wooded environment here. So, again, these are views from Maple Hill Road, these top six. The next three are views from Summit Place, which is the next road up where you really, you really don't see anything. You're looking through two different properties to get to there. And then, the bottom, let me put that up top. Yeah, our views from Bedford Road. This is a view looking southbound on Bedford Road. This is right by Campus Drive, pulling out, looking at the site. This is the existing retaining wall on the site that's looking this direction right here. This is pulling out of Campus Road right here, or Campus Drive, rather, looking at the site, the large retaining wall that exists and some of this vegetation on top. So, that would be the site that's being developed. This is another view looking down Bedford Road, looking, I believe that is looking northbound on Bedford Road. This is the edge of the church lawn here, and then that would be the wooded site. And again, looking north down Bedford Road with Campus Drive to your left here. So, that probably gives a little better idea of what the actual existing conditions are that couldn't really be portrayed accurately in that video.
I think one of the things that we were hoping to show tonight, unfortunately, the Google Earth is not, is not working. It's not our program. It's actually, the Google Earth feed is not cooperating. But what we can do in subsequent meetings is show you how this building essentially drops into Google Earth so you can actually see the accuracy of the model, and you can also see what type of vegetation surrounds this property.
If you could just explain that a little bit in words, and then, because I know the village manager was able to see that when she was in your office, and just, I think you could explain authenticity.
Right. So, yeah, so what we had hoped to do, and we can do at subsequent meetings, is when we take this model, this model that we've created and we superimpose that into the contours, again, it's inaccurate in terms of its spatial location. So, essentially, what we were able to do is just drop that into the contour, right in the exact location that we have it, so that you can actually see from an aerial view all of the trees that surround it. And it's quite dense. The, you know, we have a wintertime view, but we also, Google Earth enabled us to do a summertime view so you can see the amount of, substantial amount of vegetation that surrounds this property. The other thing that we're able to do when Google Earth is working is to take a street view, if you're all familiar with a street view, and we can actually run the street view and then go in and out of the street view to the actual model that we have so that, whereas on Bedford Road, you're seeing the wall on your right-hand side, we could flip over to the street view so that you could see exactly that that is the proper placement of that wall. So, we will provide as a supplement to this, some essentially snapshots of that so that you can see the similarities. In subsequent meetings, we can show you how that really works, too. I think that's one of the facets of the program that I think is really compelling in terms of the visual assessment. Certainly, it was disappointing that that wasn't working tonight, but we will have that at subsequent meetings to be able to show that. But again, what we're trying to do on the model here is to look at the massing, to demonstrate how this building is fitting in to this property, how it essentially is benched into this property. And I think an important and very positive feature that we have now is being able to reduce the height of that building, I think, works much better. And your visual look at that building is very limited from the adjacent properties, and I think that's a feature that we want to point out, too. So, Diego, let's just take them a little further around the property. And again, we can look at this building from any particular location that the board would like to look at it, but we'll just take you slightly around and show some of the existing buildings in the foreground. All right. So, let's go to, let's set it down, Diego, right here. So, again, you see the property line is that line right here. So, we have an opportunity. There is some encroachment of lawn area from this particular property here, but we do have opportunities for additional. You got to drop down to the visual plane, proper visual plane here. We do have opportunities to supplement. You can see the room we have to supplement this area as well.
Jim, I accept your lead.
So, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that the board has or anything in particular they'd like to see or like us to talk a little bit more about. Be happy to go through.
Could you take us down Bedford Road again?
Sure.
Look up our building.
We're going to take a shortcut here.
Want one more for South?
Well, if you don't mind, there's a driveway off of Bedford Road that services a number of houses. I'd like, if you're going down Bedford Road to go, you seem to love that driveway.
Behind you is Campus Drive.
Campus Drive. Yeah, I'd like to, no, not on that side, no, it's not Campus Drive.
Well, for starters, if you could back up.
Jerry, your driveway.
I'm very curious about what it looks like, because I haven't seen it at all.
Yes, I thought you went up it when you went around the north side of the.
Yeah.
Yeah. That driveway right up there. Yeah, that's it. Right, Jerry?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this, could we see from the view of those houses, there's a house right at the end of the driveway on the left, and then there's a, it doesn't look like, a number of houses up there.
Would it be better to go into that?
It's not depicted here.
So, turn, keep turning, keep rotating.
Right, so that would be where the house is, right?
On which side of the street?
No.
There's a house right there.
No, that's where the driveway is.
Drive is on the left.
House right there and the house up right here.
And there's a house up around the corner, right? They're not, they're not there.
No, these are.
Those are Maple Hill houses, or?
No.
These are not Maple Hill houses.
Or houses up.
No, that's.
Just the Chickentelly houses in there.
Well, no, the other house is there either.
Is it the top?
No.
Well, Diego, why don't you just go, pull back to an aerial view so we can see what is shown?
That's the cutout.
So, that's the property line there. That's the cutout referring to.
I would appreciate a better visualization of that at some point.
Okay.
A little top of the other one.
Just zoom out, Diego, from there. Let's see the cluster of houses there. Is that the house right there?
No, there's a house missing.
There's a house missing.
Should be right where the person is. That's where there should be a house.
On that side of the.
Right to that driveway, though, Jim.
Yeah.
And that's Foxwood showing up on the other side of the driveway.
Correct. Yes.
Where's Campus Drive?
Campus Drive a little further.
That's the next driveway out.
Okay.
So, Jim, although you don't have the house there, you've got the driveway in the correct location, the other houses in.
Correct.
Bring us right to the property line.
Correct. So, Diego, drop down here.
And the topo Jim there is all authentic?
Topo is authentic. Just get closer, go from there straight to the property line there, Diego, as best Okay. Keep going, Diego. No, just keep going directly there. Yeah.
And again, Jim, you want to make your point about the landscape in there, that that's only?
Yes, that is the landscape within our property, existing trees. There is vegetation between those trees and that property line, and there is vegetation on the opposite side of the property line coming towards us, coming towards that notch up there.
The wall didn't get any higher on that side, and the wall stopped being high on the back of it. Because the last time I looked, it was a cautionary.
I'm not sure the.
But you showed your last view going up that earlier in the presentation. When I looked, you had a parked car, and the parked car was like looking straight at me at my house. Jim, I think the question goes to the, when you did the video, the video was at a different elevation.
Yes. Video is at essentially the driver's eye view of that. We can go back to that video and take another look at that.
Do you have a winter view on this?
We don't have a winter view set up at this point. Just let it run. Yeah. Right. Yeah, that retaining wall at that point, Anthony? Stop right here. That's about three or four feet.
And where is the, you don't want a six-foot fence there at all?
We don't have one, but certainly, we can include one coming around the corner if that's. that's, if that's an issue. I think there's a lot of vegetation there, we could work with the vegetation, but we can work with a combination of both.
Do you have anything that would compare the height of the church to the height of this building?
Actually, I think we know that, Anthony. I mean, the model is, the model is accurate on that, too. Yeah, so, so the model in terms of the height of the building in comparison to our building is accurate. Let's come, let the video play out, we can show that. Because it will come around to the church elevation. Well, we'll come, we'll come back to it. We certainly, that's, that's information that we can, we can get you, but let it play out, Diego. Again, that's the accurate massing of the building. But we can certainly provide those, those height comparisons.
And you can provide a winter view as well, with all the trees?
Um.
That's six months out of the year, throughout these.
Diego.
I don't know, we have those blocks.
Yeah. We'll look into that, we can look into that.
Can I ask about the perspective of the lens is supposed to be here? Is this supposed to be like a human eye would see it? Because like, for instance, right now, the church building seems to be to me to be sort of elongated as if it was being taken with a wide angle kind of a lens. And in many of these shots, everything appears to be from a wider angle perspective than not the human eye perspective, you might see from a remote.
Well, we have, we have the ability to take snapshots at any particular point with the set views, so if there's particular angles that are of interest, that are of interest to, to the board, we can certainly provide those as individual snapshots.
And can we get a view coming from Campus Drive?
Sure. Diego, you know, I guess we have to go, let's go back into, to the other mode. And let's go out onto Bedford.
These stone walls appear kind of yellow, I assume that's not?
Yeah, no, that's, that's not necessarily the color, that's something that we could change. And again, there's, there's where this model becomes interesting in terms of look, we could very easily change colors of walls, change colors of fencing, various features. I think it's quite helpful to do those types of assessments. So Diego, we're going to go out to Bedford.
That's Maple Hill.
That's Maple Hill. We're going to go out to Bedford, Diego, so you got to back up. Back up.
Back the car up.
Back the car up. All right, just rotate it. Okay, so now we're going to go down the road.
No, that's passenger house.
No, that's my driveway.
That's the driveway to the three houses, I think.
Nope, that's my driveway across from that.
Oh, from Maple Hill, yeah.
Yep, keep going, Diego.
Now, stop for a second, that's the driveway to the three houses.
Stop. Okay, go further down. Next driveway.
Yeah.
And then this is Campus Drive.
Campus Drive.
That's the driveway to the three houses.
Okay, going.
I see, right, because Campus Drive is beyond.
I see a double line where they're coming out, does that mean cars can only make a right turn?
No.
You've accurately reflected the piece of the wall that's fallen down, I see.
Yes.
Don't go there tonight.
On the left-hand side. Okay, just drop down, Diego, down to the?
That's Campus Drive.
Drop down the street view. Yeah, drop it down. There you go. Okay, is that what everybody wanted to see?
Yeah, more at street level, or if you were sitting in a car.
Yeah, a little bit lower then, lower.
Again, now, that section is treeless, but doesn't have to be?
Does not have to be treeless, no. Again, gives you an idea of the general massing and the perspective from that driveway. Okay, hey, hold it right there, Diego, for a second. So this is, just to show you what, what we had hoped to, to show, it's the clarity of the Google Earth is not coming in at this point, but pull it back, go back a little bit further, but you can see where the building is, Diego, just hold it right there, so you can see where the building is nestled in the vegetation that's around it. We actually have the ability to set that building down, so you can see the vegetation that exists around it, particularly on adjacent properties. So those are views that we'll provide to your board, so you can better see that. And then, and normally, when Google Earth is functioning properly, we can also do a street view, so we could, we could show you Campus Drive at the same time that we're showing you from Campus Drive, looking at our building.
Jim, just step back for a second. So earlier, what we were trying to do was show us the tree canopy.
Yes.
Throughout this whole area.
Right.
Which is not depicted on your computer modeling.
Correct, that's correct.
Again, that's a six-month view.
Can you also show a view above street level at Maple Hill? Of what the decks and houses would be looking down at? You noted the utility area, is that where the garbage and generators and stuff will be, or will they be covered? And do you, do you know how many deliveries per day would be?
Yeah, all of that information, I believe, is in the, in the traffic study. But, yeah, they, the, I could talk a little bit about that, but let's, as he's going back, we'll, we'll talk about the deliveries. They will receive regular deliveries, those deliveries are scheduled deliveries, so they're done during, not during off-hours, there's no early morning types of deliveries for these types of facilities. These are where people live, the people that'll be impacted probably more than anybody as a residents of these facilities, so they are scheduled deliveries. I believe that it's probably two or three times a week, Bill.
Typically, we do get some air.
It's Bill Cook.
Bill Cook from Benchmark. Typically, we do get approximately one to two deliveries a day, but what those deliveries are can vary, so they can vary from something as small as just a small box truck or a van, from Home Depot Supply dropping off batteries, to, you know, some larger food deliveries. The food deliveries are usually a couple of times a week, and they are a small articulated trailer, and as Jim had mentioned, we can control, we do have the ability to limit those deliveries to regular business hours. So again, we don't have the garbage truck showing up with the beeping at 5:00 AM in the morning. As Jim pointed out, it's, our residents live there as well, so.
So what Diego has done here, again, these are for purposes of massing, the individual homeowners may realize that this is not 100% of the articulation of their buildings, but what we tried to do is get the accurate location from a topographic standpoint, from a massing standpoint, and my colleague has added on decks as best we can tell from, from our Google Earth views, so that we can show the second level if we need to. So Diego, you want to rise up at that deck level, and we can actually show what one might see of that building from a deck level, too. Just go a little bit forward here. Again, keeping in mind that there is a substantial amount of additional vegetation.
Is that property adjacent to the?
Yeah, that's a gemma.
What happens if you could go up another level?
Up another home level?
Yeah.
Other side of the street?
Other side of the street.
Sure.
Keep up the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, go, go onto the cul-de-sac now.
He's the bottom, he's the closest house we could get, the side of the?
From one of these residents?
To the, right, take them once, please, to the left.
Okay.
No, no.
Yeah.
Because that's the front deck, I just wanted to.
Mm-hmm.
They didn't put a deck on.
Yeah, they would not put the deck.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, definitely. Good rise up a little bit, Diego, just to show it from the second level.
But will we see fence, or will we see building?
Well, you see the fence, that's a six-foot fence there, you see a remnant of the building. There is a lot of vegetation between this residence, we showed that, Anthony showed that in some of the photographs between this resident and the building. But if there weren't any vegetation, this is, this is what, the portion of the massing that you'd see of that building.
I'm just curious, I guess the height is hard to tell from the picture you showed before.
The height of the building?
Yeah, from the floor view, from Maple Hill, from the cul-de-sac, I think, you do more of those pictures, and you could take it from more of one of the houses, you not?
Yeah, we, we just didn't want to get on private property to take some of these, but we certainly could do that.
If you could slide over to show this view down to the church as a part of comparison.
Yes, okay, so just rotate. You can actually see the church in the background here. So I thought, Mr. Mayor, I'd let Rich Pearson talk a little bit about traffic, we'd turn on the lights and?
I am a licensed professional engineer and a professional traffic operations engineer. As the mayor mentioned, I did grow up in Pleasantville, I grew up on the corner of Great Oak Lane and Manville Road, and after college, our office was in Pleasantville for many years before we moved to Armonk, and I lived for five years. He had mentioned the three houses off of Bedford Road, those are access by this driveway, and that is where I lived for five years after college, directly opposite the proposed site driveway. So I'm very familiar with the area roadways, and I've been coordinating with the New York State Department of Transportation, as mentioned by Anthony at the beginning, access was originally proposed to the property via Maple Hill Road, and in response to concerns expressed by the residents, probably some of you here tonight, we did work with the DOT to have our own access directly onto Bedford Road to not connect to Maple Hill Road. We have prepared a traffic study and parking study, and we've recently supplemented that study. We looked at traffic at Bedford Road intersections with Manville Road, with Maple Hill Road, and with the proposed site driveway. We have done a very conservative traffic study in that we've done models of existing facilities for Benchmark that they have in Connecticut for existing facilities. We've compared that data to data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and we have taken the most conservative, sort of the worst case of possible traffic generation, and applied that to the area roadways. As part of our analysis, we looked at the typical times for traffic, looking at impacts of developments for this type of development, and that is during weekday from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning and from 4:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon. We also did counts, as a request of the planning board, additional counts beyond those time periods to show that the peak actually occurs a little bit earlier, just before 7:00 for this type of facility, as well as 3:00. Those times are associated with shift changes. The primary shifting of the employees occurs at 7:00 and 3:00, and then there's also an 11:00 shift. There are employees that come also in other hours of the day, some of the administrative staff comes in a little bit later, so depending on their specific function, they, they do not all arrive at the exact same time. We've worked with the New York State Department of Transportation also on a traffic mitigation proposal, which is to restripe Manville Road, which is, you all know, but it's, it's just off of this drawing to the right, and there are delays, especially during the weekday PM peak hour, where it's difficult to make a left turn, and it's, the roadway is striped as, as one lane in each direction. Vehicles do occasionally form separate left and right turn lanes immediately at the intersection, but our proposal would be to stripe separate left and right turn lanes along Manville Road. There's sufficient pavement width in that area to provide separate lanes, so that right turns would be unimpeded as they come up to the intersection and make a very easy right turn towards the old village, and then the left turns would have their own lane to queue in. That would be within the roadway, which is approximately 39 feet wide. Other than that, the overall traffic impact is, is relatively benign. The, the shift changes I mentioned are out of phase with the peak hours of the adjacent roadways. We also looked at parking. We are proposing as part of this application, a text amendment that would have the parking be 0.75 parking spaces per unit. I should have mentioned as part of the traffic, but it's also related to parking, is that the residents don't have their own vehicles. The parking is for staff and for the occasional visitors. Unfortunately, most of the residents do not have frequent visitors, so the parking demands are primarily staff-related. We did look at the other four facilities in Connecticut as part of this recent study, and compared parking generation to information published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers as well. In this case, again, we took the most conservative parking demand, per se, from the, the other facilities, and the, the demands that we had from those other facilities and ITE are below the 0.70 spaces per unit that we're proposing in the text amendment, and what we're actually proposing as part of this application is 0.75 spaces per unit. It's a total of 65 spaces for the 87 proposed units, so it exceeds what we counted at the highest parking demand for any of the facilities, as well as the average ITE data. So that essentially summarizes my presentation, and I would address any comments you may have. Yep. Correct, we had, we had modified to, to 0.7, originally it was 0.5. I'm sorry, 0.5 is a proposed, so we are exceeding what's proposed.
Rich, where do you actually stand with DOT on the curb cut?
We have, I met with, with Stuart Spregg of DOT out in the field, and as we advanced the project, particularly the stormwater report, they wanted to wait till we had completed that, then we'll be making a complete submission to them. But when I reviewed the information, or what we had at the time with Stuart Spregg, we reviewed the site distances at the driveway, we showed them that, that we can meet the intersection site distance desired based on the 85th percentile travel speeds of the roadway, and we are very familiar with the NWS DOT requirements and personnel, so we will be submitting that within a couple of weeks, Joel.
I just wanted to make one other point. This pointed out to me, the mayor had asked about additional landscaping along the entrance. The plans that actually were submitted did enhance that area, too, so we have quite a bit of tree, tree growth along that entrance, so it's not as stark as it looked in the, in the simulation, so I just wanted to point out.
So I just wanted to point out that we've more fully detailed the landscape plan since that particular 3D model was developed.
I just, I have one question. I'm sorry, regarding the traffic study. In your conversations with DOT, was there a light discussed at that, a blinking yellow or anything to get at any point?
At our side driveway?
Yes.
No, there was not. The analysis of our side driveway shows that there would be minimal delays for vehicles exiting the site. It operates at a level of service C. Levels of service are similar to a report card. They range from level of service A, being the best operation and the shortest delays, to level of service F, being the longest delays and the worst operation. So level of service C is something that's typically very desirable. And New York State Department of Transportation would not wish to have traffic signals at locations where they are not necessary, because they don't want to impede the flow of traffic on Bedford Road, on the major roadways.
And Manville already operates at F at peak times?
That's correct.
At Manville-Bedford intersection?
That's correct.
Rich, do you know what, can we check how many vehicles would be entering and exiting on driveway in the worst-case AM peak?
Yes, during the peak AM, peak of the roadway, 7:45 to 8:45 AM, we would have approximately, based on our worst-case, again, the highest generation of any of the four facilities we model, and as well as higher than what ITE would project. And that would be 15 entering vehicles and 15 exiting vehicles.
During 60 minutes or anything?
During 60 minutes. So approximately one vehicle every four minutes, on average, entering and the same amount exiting. Again, it's not going to be completely perfectly every four minutes, but there will be fluctuations within that time. But relatively speaking, that would be the average.
Is that true, Rich? That's based upon counts from the other facilities or ITE or both?
It's actually the highest of both. So what we did is we took the highest of any of those four facilities, also compared it to the ITE average, and we used the highest for this analysis, to be most conservative.
Is the church losing parking spaces in that front area?
They are. I believe it's approximately nine spaces, yes.
And so that would be on their dime to defend the efficacy of that?
Correct. We would have to work that out with them.
Okay.
As we know, the churches, unfortunately, their parking lot is relatively underutilized these days.
Although not when they have rentals or something of that kind?
Understood.
Now, this is all part of the 69-page traffic study that we got, correct?
Correct.
Which, maybe you can, in a nutshell, because some of the pages, the capacity charts specifically are very detailed.
Yes, very technical.
Yeah, very technical, have a ton of information in there. Is there anything that you could highlight in there that we should focus in on? I mean, I've read them, and as you said, it's very technical, it's very.
Yeah, I would say focus in on the intersection operations summary tables, tables two and three. They take the results of those very technical analyses, the capacity analyses, and they summarize the volume-to-capacity ratio and the intersection delay, which is the average intersection delay per vehicle, and the level of service associated with those delays.
Thank you.
And those tables provide the existing operations, the future operations without the development, and the future operations with the development. And in the case of the Manville Road intersection with Bedford Road, the operations with the left-turn lane improvements.
Thank you.
So as an aside, the left-turn, right-turn proposal at Manville and Bedford would provide operational improvements completely unrelated to your project, and we should press that to be happening soon, from your standpoint?
Absolutely. Well, from the state or from the applicant?
The state.
You can try from the state. My money's on having, if you were to approve this project, to have the applicant pay for that, and then that would be done quicker.
1-800-ALVIN.
Let's get the Somerville fix first.
So just to clarify, you said, maybe you guys said that the residents don't have cars or won't have cars?
The residents don't have cars. The individual residents don't have cars.
They're prohibited from having cars.
Maybe one, maybe two, depending. But based on our experience, we've done assisted living projects for nearly 15 years, benchmarks experience.
Of 80 units, one or two people might have cars.
Right. The reason that they're in these developments is that they need assistance with their day-to-day life cares. And so these type of people in this condition are not the same type of people that would own their own cars and drive around frequently.
You know, I just, I mean, my own personal experience, my father was in a place just like this until recently, and they had more than one or two cars. In a facility about this size, there might have been 20 cars in the garage, but it wasn't one or two.
And the reason why I'm jumping up is because you've given me a great ability to call Bill up now. We did also do a density analysis and a portfolio comparison of benchmarks, similarly situated facilities. And I'll sort of let Bill take you through it, but the question was asked from us from the planning commission, well, you know, what do your facilities look like in areas that are near Westchester? Obviously, there aren't that many in Westchester yet from Benchmark, however, there are a bunch in Connecticut. And so what Bill has done is taken the facilities in and around the area on similarly sized lots, similarly sized facilities, to give the board an analysis of what the density, what this market model really requires and why we are seeking an 87-unit facility, not just to get 87 units, but because that's what this type of market, which really focuses on quality residential and onsite recreational facilities, why you need that type of density. I think, Bill, also, in going through that, if you could give us a description of the residences and obviously answer the question about how many cars, et cetera, just wrap it all in, but I think it's good.
David, before Bill speaks, I think Rich said that the parking that he's proposing is 0.75 spaces per unit, but your proposed text doesn't reflect that.
Let me clarify. The proposed text calls for one space per two units, 0.5. We are supplying 0.67, 0.75 spaces. So in other words, we're proposing more than is required on the text amendment, but 0.5 is more of an even number than.
Okay. We're assuming that Susan will be able to validate the 0.5 is more or less an industry standard. We're essentially over-parking it to be conservative, to address Trustee Scarsad's point, but I think Bill can give us some empirical observations of other facilities and how many folks drive.
So let me turn it over to Bill.
Good evening. I guess to start, I'll directly address the questions you just raised. And typically, for people who don't know, Benchmark currently owns and operates 47 buildings, so I'm kind of, and I've probably seen about 46 of them. So I'm kind of basing my experience on seeing the other buildings. And I've been with Benchmark for six years as well, so I've got a good background. Typically, from a resident perspective, we usually see that there's probably four to five residents in each building that generally will own a car. And I guess I could phrase that into own a car, because out of four or five, I will say that two or three of them usually have several flat tires and don't move. However, they are there just because people, you know, it's difficult to give things up. So that's what I would say. So I don't know, and I will, you know, I could ask in reference to your father. I know there are different types of facilities as well, as far as instead of straight assisted living, some have an independent living, you know, portion to it. We own a few buildings like that. That's a different animal. Those people are, you know, they're young. We have a building in Stamford, it's, you know, it's what they call a CCRC, Continuing Care Retirement Community. That has 208 independent living units, and there are people in there who still go to work every day. But they're, you know, but they're also 2,500-square-foot apartments with full kitchens, three bedrooms, and a fireplace. So that's why sometimes it's important to note. But it's also important, I think, to know from a car perspective, that while we reference 87 units is what our building is, 20 of those are dedicated strictly to people with a diagnosis of dementia or Alzheimer's. So those 20 units, it essentially takes 20 units right out of the mix. Those people cannot drive. They are medically, I guess, I won't say forbidden, but prohibited from having a driver's license. So if you think in terms of actual parking for units, it's probably best to think in terms of 67 units. So if you look at that from the parking spaces we're provided, we're almost parking one per space. And typically, again, from a little empirical background, why we do over, you know, I guess you could say we're over-parking it. And what we found is that most of the time, the parking spaces are generally underutilized. However, when there are times when you do need them, you do need the additional spaces. And those are obviously holidays, events, and so things of that nature. So it definitely makes sense from our perspective. Makes it easier for us. And, you know, I think, and also, as the mayor had asked a question about some of the parking spaces that were being lost from the church, I think it's worth noting that we actually are showing here in this parking lot, we're actually proposing a connecting sidewalk to the church. So that could be, you know, we've actually had some discussions with the church about that being perhaps a shared parking lot or something, where if we're not using it, again, you know, Sunday mornings might not be a high priority for us, so it might work out better or something along those lines, so it could work, you know, work together between the two of them.
Talk a little bit about density.
Yep, in terms of what David had referenced earlier, in terms of density, and I guess the overall question would be, excuse me, why 87 units? And I guess the, again, as a company, the first thing to note is we are an owner and operator first. We don't develop these building properties to flip them. Every building that we've either acquired or currently built, we currently operate, we have never sold a property. So to point out what other people may do or what other people want to do, some companies are more into the business of building an assisted living, trying to fill it as quickly as they can, and then selling it. So, you know, what they, I can't control what they would do. But from a long-term perspective of what we need to do to maintain our community, we have found that the 87, typically between 85 and 92 units, is about what we find to be our sweet spot. In our portfolio, we do have some buildings with more units, 100, 110, and those sometimes don't perform as well as others. And we've had to undertake some renovations, enlarging some units, changing some from two studios to a one-bedroom, effectively decreasing a unit, something along those lines. And then the way we've actually currently arrived at where we are, it was actually, it was the result of a two-year process that we undertook as a company to develop what we call a prototype, which is essentially everything about this building, from the shape, the number of units, the unit mix, the comparison. So that was a research project that we undertook with every aspect of our company, including outside consultants and architects. And along with that, and it's kind of dovetailed into where we are in assisted living today, in that in terms of the amenities that people expect when they come into these buildings now, as far as exercise facilities, maybe a movie theater, a bistro, addition to a dining room, country kitchens, these kind of things, it's, you know, it adds square footage to the building, it makes them larger. And frankly, the level of care that people are requiring now does require staffing. I know I've referenced it before, but the average age of our resident is 87 years. And by nature of definition of assisted living, if you are moving in, you do need some help with daily chores and existence, so that therefore the staffing levels are required to maintain. So essentially, what that comes down to is if you look at the comparison of what people expect, the number of employees that we have to carry in order to provide the care they provide, it all does come down to kind of a number that makes it worthwhile. And in order to basically make that number work, we found that the units between 84 and 92 was our best option for doing that. So, and then just, for a minute, I just want to discuss, I know there's been some reference here to our traffic studies that we did at Connecticut communities. Prior, when I was here at the board, I know some people had asked, or had been asked about, you know, what our other facilities show. And there was also a specific comment made to, well, you know, don't really care about the ones in Maine necessarily, but what about the ones closest to Westchester that would be more representative of what happens around here? So the numbers that were referenced for Rich's parking study were actually taken from four properties in Connecticut. They are located in Brookfield, Connecticut, which is just outside of Danbury. One's in Milford, Connecticut, one's in Woodbridge, Connecticut, and there's another one in Middletown. And the other reason that they were taken is they also, in addition to being the closest, they also satisfied the aspect of being closest to the number of units and closest to the square footage of building. So again, we have a property in Stamford, which I referenced, which is probably maybe the closest. However, again, it's 300,000 square feet, 300 units, it just would not even compare to what we need here. So I tried to balance the closest buildings that accurately portray as close as possible what our project here would actually reference.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you speak about the bedroom mix that you're looking at and as well the size of the units?
I don't have those right in front of me right now offhand, but I know we have submitted that previously. I can get into the existing, you know, I can look at that and get you the answer for that, obviously. Typically, the most what we usually have are kind of, well, the Alzheimer's, nope, you haven't.
106 bedrooms.
It's 106 bedrooms. However, I think what you're actually getting to is the mix between studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms? Correct.
And the relative size of each.
Yeah. The square footage on the units varies. Our studios are typically from about 350 to 400 square feet, and the two bedrooms go up, one bedrooms go up to about 500 to 550, and then the two bedrooms are up around 600 or 700 square feet.
And in our next submission letter, Susan, to the board trustees, we will answer that. I believe it was submitted earlier, but we'll make sure that's cleared to everyone.
Sorry, I don't have the exact numbers right now, but that's very easily, I can obtain that tomorrow.
Could you touch in the cover letter, I think, from certain assignments, about impacts on police fire ambulance?
Typically, what we do in our communities is for non-emergency trips, at least from a, say, from an ambulance perspective, we contract with a private carrier for that. So anything of a non-emergency nature is taken care of through a private carrier. So what that means is that does not impact the village's business in one way at all. We also typically make sure that those trips are, again, during business hours, no flashers, that kind of thing, no sirens, so we keep that. When a 911 call is required, we typically find we're running about two per month or so, which, you know, that's, and again, those numbers are a little, you know, there's some weeks where you could have more and some weeks and some months where you might have less. That's a little tough to control. The other thing I do point out to that is, you know, basically, most of our residents, we concentrate on kind of a, you know, a small radius that we pull from. So one could assume that many of the residents were from Pleasantville anyway, so whether the 911 call is coming from our building, it may have just been coming from a local resident who lives in the area as well.
Well, so two, an average of two 911 calls per month. Mostly requiring an ambulance?
Yes.
So we'll reflect that back to our voluntary inlets corps.
Yep, and in different towns, different towns do.
Typically, I think, in the neighborhood of 1,000, 1,100 calls per year at the moment, so that would represent 5% increase, so it's something to look at.
And then typically, I don't know how your village works, but I know other villages have a, some have a policy where if an ambulance comes, they have to send a police car or something of that nature as well, so.
Yeah, I might also add that we have an ambulance, it's a volunteer staff, but the equipment and the housing of the force is funded through a taxing district, which you would be a part of, so there'd be a contribution to that. And fire calls?
Hopefully, again, we have no, there are no cooking facilities in any of the individual apartments, so all the meals are prepared, so, you know, we don't have any cooking going on, which, you know, again, I'll reference some of our other buildings that do have IL apartments where some people cook, and that is where a lot of that comes from. So typically, our fire calls are minimal.
And do I recall you're saying that you build steel frame?
Yes, and we, yeah, this is a steel and concrete construction, fully sprinkled with state-of-the-art smoke detectors and life safety systems throughout.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
As promised, I am going to end the night with asking the board if there are any other assessments. I know that you've just seen a lot of them. Are there any other assessments that this board wants to see before a determination of significance can be made? I know, Susan, assuming that BFJ still wants to weigh in on everything that we've said tonight and submitted over the last week, are there any, I should ask, are there any comments further on traffic specifically? I don't know if.
We had a couple of the boards ready to hear them.
Please do.
So the first on traffic is.
I'm sorry, I should have officially introduced Susan, as I have the best. Susan Fabate from BFJ Planning is our consultant to assist us in reviewing all of this. Their services are on behalf of the village, although paid for by the applicant.
Correct. So the first question deals with the counts undertaken. I think the report that you submitted makes the case that. I think the report that you submitted makes the case that the peak hour is between 3:00 and 5:00, I believe, for 3:00 and 4:00, and the peak hour for Bedford Road is between 5:00 and 6:00. I think we had a question in our office about that, looking at the actual counts from DOT, it looked like the peak on Bedford Road was actually between 3:00 and 4:00, which would overlap somewhat with the peak hour for your project. So I think we were just looking for some verification on that. And then the other main point we had on traffic was that, given that about 45% of the project's traffic would be going south on Bedford Road, that might affect the intersection of Bedford and Broadway, so we were suggesting that you look at the impacts on that intersection as well. And then on parking, we actually agree that they're certainly overparked. I think we would be quite comfortable with the ratio of .67, actually, which would be about 59 spaces. So it looks like you have an extra six that you don't perhaps need. And I think when you first came in in February, you came in with 58, I think it was, and I'm not sure why the number went up. I guess perhaps to be very conservative, but we thought maybe land banking could be something that the board looks at. I think that's already in your code as something that can be done. Obviously, you would show that you have the spaces available on site if it's ever shown to be required, but you wouldn't be paving them at this point. And certainly, that would be beneficial for stormwater and for heat, heat from the parking areas, and just reducing overall pavement. And we also think that it's quite conducive to do shared parking with the church, and that that's something that sort of lends itself to reducing the parking to about 59 spaces.
If we could too, on that, there's only one section of the parking lot, which is the north section, that cars would actually face homes that are over on that side across from Foxwoods. So if you could eliminate that, that would eliminate some headlights in the homes that are there. So it's just that one section where you actually have double parking on the north side. Yeah, you know, that would be the place where, you know, I think for, as far as residents would go, would have the most impact if it was eliminated.
Or you continued that fencing on top of that retaining wall.
But if they're going to take some out, they should take them out there.
Definitely take a look at that.
That more buffer on that area, totally, yeah.
That's it for traffic. We thought the counts were reasonable in general, and then the way the study was done, it was certainly a worst-case scenario. We had a couple other comments, but.
Go for it.
Keep going. I guess just overall, I'm struggling a little bit to understand, you lost a story, you did not lose units, and the building coverage and impervious coverage is actually somewhat smaller than when you first came in in February, and yet you have six or seven added parking spaces. So if you could just describe how you sort of managed, I know there was some internal reconfiguration of common areas, whether you had to shrink units, or how sort of that was possible, would be helpful.
Turn over to Anthony. Yes, there was a slight decrease in building coverage, and the result, the reason for that is because previously, a portion of the lower level of the building, when it was a four-story building, was unexcavated. As well, a portion of the fourth floor was only a partial floor. So in essence, you had two full stories and two partial stories. And they were very schematic plans as well. So what the architect did was combine those two partial stories into one full lower level, and now you end up with a three-story building of about the same footprint. It's actually a tad smaller, just the architect sharpened his pencil a little bit.
It's being fully utilized, whereas before it wasn't.
Correct. Building was just made a little more efficient, right.
Okay. Our other, I guess, key concern was fire, and I understand that you haven't yet met with the fire department, and we would suggest that happen as soon as possible, because we did have a little bit of concern, I guess that's the eastern side of the building, being fully accessible by fire trucks, and especially given the grade change of the site.
You're talking about behind the building?
Yeah, the utility area. And also just discussing the location of potential hydrants, just overall, making sure that they're comfortable with the ability to.
Yeah.
Service the site, and co-compliance and all of that.
Right.
So we would suggest that sooner rather than later, in case that results in any changes to the site.
Duly noted, and we'll come back in August with.
And then our engineers, who are subconsultants to us, had a couple comments. I mean, a lot of it was just making sure that there's enough water capacity in the village, things that you probably are already doing, certainly the stormwater management plan, which I know you're doing. They requested looking at the cut-and-fill analysis, how much soil you're importing versus exporting, because that will certainly speak to construction traffic, so number of trips required during construction.
Is there rock? Do you have any being concerned about rock?
Yeah.
What is there?
Looking at last.
There was some preliminary earthwork done, we'll take a look at it. The rock was not at the surface, it was down a decent amount. We'd have to take a look at it and see if we're actually, how much rock would be taken out, but it would certainly be down from the surface enough that it wouldn't be a huge impact. We'll take a look.
We had a couple minor comments, which I think we can hold off on the actual zoning text, I think, at this point. It's helpful just to get an idea of the site itself.
Susan, are you going to be generating any kind of additional review memo, and is Hudson Engineering going to be generating it?
Well, they gave us some comments, which we can incorporate into a memo, probably before the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Could I answer, or ask one question? I live in the vicinity of the schools, and so, for example, in the high school, the new addition at the high school was just built. Something that, at least, I never thought to ask was, are you going to have some sort of air treatment, air handling unit that's quiet? Because the one that exists now is not quiet, and the entire neighborhood hears how the air is handled in the high school. And I'm just wondering, are you addressing that for a quiet neighborhood?
Yeah, we, we're actually working, we'll be doing a noise analysis, looking at the equipment. Obviously, state-of-the-art equipment can be silenced, you know, there's very good equipment out there, and whatever kind of noise or hum or so on is, again, going to affect the residents of this facility. But what we're going to be doing is looking specifically at the noise impacts of any mechanicals on the rooftop here. All mechanicals will be on the rooftop. And what you may not have picked out by doing the simulation, you can see there's a bit of a parapet wall. It has a residential look, slope to it, but there's also a height of that, and that further attenuates any noise from the equipment. But we're looking at the source first, and we'll be looking at the noise impact from individual components too, and provide that to the board.
And it's a minor point, but the electrical service from the street, do the building be buried?
Everything underground, yes.
So I can say, from my standpoint, you still owe a stormwater, as you've already said, and.
That's correct.
You've heard a number of questions. And further to some of the questions that were asked, I think the simulation was a great positive addition to it, and I thank you for doing that. I think it gives everybody a better sense. The piece of it that, of course, can't quite be captured is the reality of existing vegetation, and also the changes with the seasons. So I know your Google Earth thing is yet to be consummated when it's back up and running, but if there is some economically realistic way of giving us an idea of what some of these views look like, winter versus summer, and also to assist us, for example, I thought it was interesting to note, you know, when we were two houses up the hill, looking back down at the site, at the view of the church versus the view of this new proposal, recognizing that that's not the view of the church either. Some of those comparisons may help us and everybody else get a sense for what the reality would be of the views.
Yeah, I agree, and, you know, we will work with, if there's particular residents that have said that I'm welcomed onto their properties, we may make some of those arrangements to look specifically. There's nothing that helps more than seeing oftentimes what neighbors see from their perspective. We have opportunities to mitigate, we talked about the fence, which was a recent addition to that, but very careful placement of vegetation, I think, can also help if they have concerns about their particular view area. But that's the great thing about this program, allows us to do a little more than we could just by simply cutting sections and showing that it's realistic vantage points to. And again, we'll work with the neighbors as much as we're able to, and if we can get access, we'll do that.
So, I don't know how you want to do that, but throw out your email or whatever, because you got a bunch of people here who might or might not want to avail themselves of that.
Okay, sounds fair, thank you.
Anybody else?
I just want to hear what the fire department would have to say.
Yeah, all that stuff's on there. Joel, any?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I thank you for that. That was, I think, a big step forward on our understanding of what is to propose, and also, certainly, I think all of us appreciate your effort to respond to some of the questions that have arisen thus far.
Are there two meetings in August, Mr. Mayor?
No, two. Two.
Two?
Yes.
What's the second meeting in August? Because I think in terms of knowing that we want to try to address your various issues, I thought earlier somebody had mentioned August 12.
26th.
We were targeting the 26th, internally. So that's what we'd like to try, that'll give us time to get to fire, complete our stormwater, answer Susan and Hudson Engineering's questions, and be back here.
Would be the 26th.
Right, August 12 and August 26. We may not have five board members, but of course, the whole thing is taped, and we can, you know, if anyone can't make it, they can always catch up that way you are.
For the members of the community, is it possible to delay this into September? I'm not sure how scheduled.
Well, I tell you, we are very, very careful about not taking action or holding important public hearings on weeks like that. But I think it's not fair to the applicant to slow them down for the purposes of their work, but I can assure you that we would not and will not ever schedule a public hearing or even a work session discussion that would engage all the community on a week when lots of people are away.
Are these employees on prime vacations?
No, no doubt about it, no doubt about it. But I do think that if these guys are ready and willing to do it, adding the stuff to the record is helpful. Again, we'll have these presentations in a public session with the TV record, so anybody who missed can either watch it later or even watch it live from wherever you are, if you want to ruin your vacation by watching village board meetings.
Mr. Mayor, we are trying to aim for a September public hearing, so obviously.
I understand, I understand your goal, but as I say, I mean, it's clear, it's certainly clear from our standpoint, and we need to make clear to you, that we won't be taking substantive action in, you know, the month of August.
Oh, no, and that's why, that's why we, yeah, that's why we wanted to put on the record that we, or at least aiming for September.
People need a reasonable chance when they get back after Labor Day, school starts, all of that, to catch up with what's going on.
And in fact, on one hand, that extra intersection that Susan asked us to, we think it would be prudent and cautious to do it in September rather than in August.
Right.
Sure, correct. But that said, you know, my personal opinion is, based on what we have reflected back to you, you are building a pretty complete record here, and with the missing links we've already talked about, fill those gaps, and I think we'll be in a position to have public discussions with the neighbors on a public hearing, so.
And one other, I guess, point of procedure is, originally, we had discussed having combined meetings with this board and the planning commission, because the planning commission is an interested agency, involved agency, I should say, in this review. I don't know if we can put the wheels into motion, perhaps having, if the August works or if it's September.
Well, so we'll certainly invite them, and in fact, Russ Klein was here a little earlier and saw a big chunk of what you presented tonight, so we'll throw that out. I don't know that we would try to make that a formal joint meeting, what do you think, Joel?
Well, you can, if you like.
But August is not really a great time to do it, so.
What I wanted to just remind the board is that the next formal action you have to take before you start talking about public hearings or whatever, is you have to make a secret determination.
Right.
Either a positive declaration or a negative declaration.
Understood.
That's the first substantive action, or the next substantive action the board would have to take.
And that's done without public hearing?
There's no public hearing required on whether the board should issue a positive declaration or negative declaration. You certainly have the right to hear comments from the public on that issue.
And we would. I also think, you know, we can talk to the neighbors offline, but if it would be helpful to have a work session where we have longer time to exchange views, we'd be happy to do that. And I know one of the residents has put together a version of a composite of the sort we saw tonight, and you can now compare that to what you've seen tonight, and modify it or not, but if you'd like to present that at some point, we'd be happy to see that as well, so.
Work session.
Sure.
I appear to, to be sent out that simulation right now as supplements.
Well, so anybody is welcome to send anything to us if you want to have, if you want that.
Not commenting on the project.
Right, that's fine. So, again, I think we just have to maintain clarity between what's presented to us by the applicant and responses, comments, additions to the record presented by the community, pro or con. So we certainly wouldn't do that tonight, but would be happy to receive that.
But I can answer a lot of the questions, Governor Ray said, based on the time to change.
Okay, fine, so.
A lot of views on.
Okay, and I would be more than happy to engage that conversation, I don't think tonight is the night to do it, but we'll be happy to engage that discussion.
Okay.
All right.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Yes.
Great. Okay, if, we need to move on to our next stuff, but if there's anything anybody wants to say tonight quickly, we'd be happy to hear it. I think we've, you need to come to the mic so the public on watching TV can.
I just got one question.
Okay, name and address.
Jerry Chikatelli, 54 Bedford Road. I just, is there any way we can get a comparison to what they're doing, to what the MLA building is being built now? That's helpful from a visual and a 3D. That's real. I know how tall that is, I know how big that is, I know what it looks like. Is there any way I can get an appreciation of what this building would look like?
Well, I don't think that would be.
In comparison to them, just that, I visually can see that, and then I put that on top of a 40-foot hill, it kind of gives an appreciation. It was helpful to get to 3D, but it's still not real.
Well, it sounds like you might be in a position to do that on behalf of the neighbors, if you think that would be useful, so.
That'd be all, just show anything I can visually see right now.
Understood.
Show anything that's real.
All right. One more? You're going to need to come to the microphone. People can't hear when they're.
When we can have the work session.
Well, I tell you, we'll reach out to you, let me talk to the board about what their availability is, and then we'll determine that.
Andrew Laidon, 40 for Summit Place, I would like the applicants to, they could also provide some kind of a snow removal study, particularly on that driveway, I don't know if there's something along those lines, but just exploring the slope of that driveway, particularly in the winter, and what it means in terms of access to the facility, both regular and emergency access, and also for snow removal. What are you going to do with the extra snow coming off of it? It doesn't look like there's a lot of extra land and availability to remove that snow and place it in a place that's not going to impact other areas of the neighborhood.
Okay. All right, I thank you all, to be continued. So we'll take the materials that have been submitted to us and post it on the website, Pleasantville-ny.gov. That's realistic for tomorrow, Patty?
Oh.
For the next day?
I don't know how quickly I can get it.
Yeah, I don't know that the video is realistic, but all the paperwork materials.
All the other stuff is already on the web.
And we've already given a disc to.
Fine.
It's already up, Mr. Mayor, it's on the web.
Great, all right.
We don't, so.
We need what that is.
Diego, need a hand with that?
We got you a lot.
He gave the best presentation.
He did, yeah, he did some great stuff. Let me get that.
All right, two-minute break to clear the decks, and then we'll continue our meeting. Welcome back, as we continue with our meeting. We had a break to allow the people from MetroCard to break down their AV stuff. Our next order of business is a public hearing. Is there a motion to open a public hearing on local law amending Chapter 185, Section 35-1, entitled "Regulating Wireless Telecommunications Facilities"?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Patty, you want to give the executive summary of where we are and why we're doing this?
I always get the fun jobs. Okay, we are modernizing our existing code as it concerns wireless facilities, which basically are cell towers in the village of Pleasantville. And our consultants at Turner &amp; Turner had suggested that we modify our current code to require certain conditions be met if, in fact, any new towers are to be sited with in the village. This affords us some protection with respect to location and proximity to residences and other economic centers, and also gives us some opportunity to require different enhanced features, such as generators on site, and also requires the carriers to take into consideration abandonment of cell towers.
So, again, the consultants we hired in this venture have some specific experience So, again, the consultants we hired in this venture have some specific experience in the world of wireless telecom, both, on both sides of the aisle, having served as counsel to telecom companies in the past, and now in this case, representing us. So I think we were concerned that our code, which had not been revisited for must be fifteen or so years, was due for an update, and Rick Turner came back with, I think, a useful set of changes, which are still consistent with the relatively narrow purview that we have, given the fact that the FCC controls an awful lot of this stuff and makes it impossible for us to regulate some aspects of this as much as we may otherwise. So if there are any comments from the public, we would be happy to hear them now, either live or at a call-in at 769-1677.
We don't have any written comments.
As might be expected, this scintillating subject has generated a little comment.
I'm fine here.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the public hearing is closed. Go to the resolutions, number 180, Colleen. Let me say before we do that that we're all peering into our little devices as we have moved into the paperless world, so... 180, Colleen.
I need dollar amounts for these, don't I? Yep.
Oh, rest, the total for each category was not included in the original resolution.
PDF.
Paperless fails. Resolution one.
Numberless.
Good God. Could've started reading and saved on. Getting everything so good. Everything that's highlighted, and then this is the total, and these are the check numbers. Just leave the... Sorry. No, no problem. Okay, here we go. Resolve that pre-check register dated July 22, 2013, covering check numbers 75978 through 76063, has been reviewed, and they are hereby approved of listed below, coming from the General Fund, the Water Fund, the Refuge Fund, the Pool Fund, the Trusted Agency Fund, totaling $469,918.57.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
I think I have one, but it's on the backup, isn't it?
We're finding our way in the new virtual world.
Yes, I'm sorry. I, hold on, one...
We need two screens.
I do.
Or no screens.
I'm really sorry. Here, the P-Check register. Okay. It was a little jumbly. That was the one that you're gonna...
Yeah, you can make heads or tails of it.
What?
It was hard to understand.
Yeah, it was. Okay, I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
Motion approved. I'm good, and I did read it. So 181, Mindy...
A resolve that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meeting held on July 8, 2013, and they are hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there comments or corrections?
Oh, good.
I had one correction, and that was in Oral Communications, Judy Belfiore, is B-E-L-F-I, not F-L-I. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
A motion approved. Jonathan?
A resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the consulting fees for engineering services from Professional Consulting LLC as per their rate schedule for the fiscal year 2013-14.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a, does not commit us to use PCI for any services. It simply verifies the rate per hour we would pay for services we use, correct, Patty?
That's correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion approved. 183.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from the Jacob Burns Film Center to close the Cooley Street permit parking lot from Thursday, September 26 through Sunday, September 29, for a special event.
Is there a second?
Second.
I note that Dominic Beletta is here, the Managing Director of the Burns, and I wonder, Dominic, if I could ask you to arrive at the mic just to briefly describe what you need from us.
That's a long walk, Mayor. I brought Tom O'Connor with me, the Technical Director at the Media Arts Lab, who oversee the production of the event. So this is our annual gala. This will be the third year that we've, if it's approved, that we've held it in the Cooley Street Lot. The parameters will be the same as we've done the past two years, to take the lot on Thursday morning, bring in the tent and equipment, construct that, move into technical rehearsal Friday into Saturday, the event will be Saturday evening, and then strike Saturday evening into Sunday, and return the lot by Sunday evening.
So this is the lot sometimes called Lane Plumbing behind the post office?
The formerly Lane.
Right. So essentially, the logistics are the same as they were last year.
Correct.
And Patty and Judy, we were able last year to re-accommodate our parkers for the days, those two commuting days when the lot's unavailable?
Yeah, fine. We made it work. Well, I thought we had moved it to last year, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, not Thursday. We did, we did all four days last year?
Yes, but we all were not happy about it. And we had talked about them condensing this so that it wasn't four, you know, two business days of closing it, you know, Saturday and Sunday is one thing, but, you know, maybe closing it Thursday after six, when the commuters get back, or, you know, why they need the whole day, I think is really inconvenient.
Well, what percentage of that permit lot is Jacob Burns Film Center employees anyway? There's a lot of permit holders.
We have, we have, I believe we have eleven, eleven spaces in the lot.
Eleven of the...
Permits that you have bought.
That we have bought.
I appreciate the theoretical, but do we have any complaints last year from commuters? Did any of us hear anybody complain?
I did not.
I didn't either. So I would say, although we're worried about it until we actually see that manifested, I guess I'm good with it.
They have to go into the man, the man vault.
Yeah, for one day.
They don't have enough room in the other.
Two. Or two days, yeah. But they didn't complain, nobody complained.
I mean, I watched it pretty carefully from my perch downtown, and there were plenty of places on Wheeler and on Village. I'm also just curious what the foreign market has to say with the parking on Saturday. Does it have any...
He's fine with it.
We've spoken to Peter in advance, and... Just wanted to make sure.
He is fine with it. I just, I thought, I just thought I remember us doing it three days last year.
We wanted it three days.
But if you're saying for, yeah.
And the arrangement in the past has been that you reimburse us at some daily rate based on the value of the parking?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
And then if you need additional police services, you pay for that.
Correct. That reimbursement should really be in the resolution, shouldn't it?
You mean that the reimbursement for the lot would be included?
For services provided by the village and support. That's fine by us?
That's fine.
I don't know the amount yet. We can just put the language in.
Okay. All right, so can we, can we...
The mover was Brian.
Yes.
So we'll modify that to, say, subject reimbursement at the parking rate...
Determined by the village administrator.
Determined by the village administrator.
Parking and other services.
And other services if required.
So, I mean, I can speak for myself. As Jonathan indicated, the event is an important fundraising event for an anchor, not-for-profit in our community, and happy to be of help if we can be of help without substantially inconvenience to anyone else. Blessedly, the rival Lane Lot makes it possible for us to do that, and here's hoping to raise a whole lot of money.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts a donation from Richard Shea and Andrea Gilman in the amount of $500 towards the Music, Pleasantville Musical Festival.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Richard Shea and Andrea Gilman. All in favor?
Aye.
A motion approved. 185.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the proposal from Door Control, Inc. for an automated door system at the senior center at an amount not to exceed $2,569.
Is there a second?
Second.
So Patty, as I, as I read this, it's the same door, it's not replacing the doors, we're simply adding a power assist...
Putting a pneumatic source in there.
To one leaf, not the other.
It really needs to be done. It's just, it's very heavy, and there's really, there's really little remedy. The door that sits now does not meet ADA requirements. This will. Mike Test to review this, it'll also meet code.
Okay.
You know, we had discussed some sort of a lobby, some sort of a wind protection system there.
I have a proposal for that too, for $900, but this is more important right now.
Is that like an additional awning piece?
Yeah, it's like an awning.
Right, and it seems like we were losing a lot of heat right there.
We need that as well, but I don't really know where the money's going to be coming from, so take a little at a time.
Okay, so this is a tenant improvement on space we lease from Ashburn LLC, which is the not-for-profit managing corporation of that building. I add to that that, based on the terms of the way this was all structured, the village has an opportunity to acquire that building at approximately the 15-year point, which is about four or five years from now, unrelated to this issue, but as of the moment, this is a tenant improvement to our lease space. All in favor?
Aye.
A motion approved. 186. Jonathan?
Is it Mindy?
No, she just...
She just jibbed the door.
Okay, excuse me. Resolve that the Board of Trustees, based upon the recommendation of Martin Kravitz, architect, hereby awards the bid for AD Wheeler Avenue Roof Rehabilitation Project and scaffolding to high-tech, 1724 Amsterdam Avenue, New York, New York, 1113, as follows. The roof rehabilitation is $191,000, and the scaffolding is $70,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a grim moment for us.
It's begrudgingly.
We have had some gutter failures and water damage on the roof of this building, and we also, as many of you are aware, have a problem in the winter with snow and ice. And the result of all of this is that we're confronted with $261,000 expense. That includes building a scaffolding around the building in order to make these repairs, and then to repair the gutters, make some woodwork repairs where there has been rot, add heating units that will help melt the snow, and add an additional line of snow guards to keep snow from sliding. So it is necessary to do it. We have struggled long and hard to try to find a cheaper way to do it, actually rebid the project twice, and confront now the reality that this is what it costs.
I apologize for doing this, but we just got the research today on the roofing company that did it before, and my question is, so much of what we bank on is in the warranty work, and we've got 75-year warranty on some of the stuff that's up there, 10 on other, 15 to 25 on other, 40 on other, of which we can't collect on any because seemingly the roofing contractor's out of business. Should we not consider a longevity or some analysis with who we're awarding the bid to that they, that they have a potential, have proven to have existed over the last decade or some period? I mean, is there a standard by which we can look at that, or should we not even consider it?
You mean to go after somebody?
No, no, I'm just saying that...
You mean just to demonstrate that company's been around for a while?
I'm just saying all the warranties cease to make any difference if the guy goes out of business in two years.
Well, I mean, they're...
So, I mean, the question is, yeah, how long has, how long has high-tech been around? And, because I know a lot of these companies, the bigger companies, have been around for a long, long time, and are highly reputable, not that high-tech, I have no idea, but given that, looking at 40-year roofs, shouldn't we have some sort of...
Marty had requirements in the spec for the minimum experience and track record for the companies, I don't know, I think it may have said minimum five years of experience.
Yeah.
There isn't any way to guarantee a company will remain in business.
No, I understand that.
A bond is posted. I mean, the reality here is that I can speak for myself, having once owned a house with a tile roof. The tiles are fine, it's everything else that causes you trouble.
Correct, I understand.
No, but to Jonathan's point, and I found my backup notes that I made the notes on, but the, in addition to that, we, the, Mari certifies that the applicator, one of the other people where...
The subcontractor.
The subcontractor, is an approved applicator, and he has an agreement that exists with the company. So when does that, I would like to know when that agreement expires, because it's no use to us if we hire him as a certified applicator, but six months from now, his contract as a certified applicator is invalid.
Well, six months from now, the project will be done. I mean, the goal is to get this done before the winter.
But he no longer is, but he can't come back and, and, you know...
I mean, the issue is when, when the work is done, if a company is on the manufacturer's list of certified installers, I think we've done everything we can do.
Yeah. Well, so Patty, I guess what I would request is that we, not that we wouldn't, but historically, there has been issues with adequately documenting the bonding, making sure we know where the maintenance bonds are, making sure that we can, we can access all this stuff, and that we actually exercise those bonds, and make sure that they're in place, and that we're not giving them back for any reason, so that we have, we have some protection, and those bonds should be matched to the warranty work.
Well, the issue is, and as you'd seen when I researched the prior project, there wasn't a requirement for a maintenance bond. There was just a requirement for a written guarantee.
Right.
But regardless, there wasn't a closeout that appeared to be done adequately, because there isn't a record of one. So I'll ask Joel to take a look at the specs to be sure that we do require the proper bonding for this project. I don't, I'm professionally skeptical that it's in the existing spec, enough bonding requirements to cover our concerns, because the same architect produced the specs, so I'm not sure if the existing specs for this project require...
Well, the same architect did the specs for the previous roofing job, which...
Right.
Gives me the concern.
I have to say, I had a long discussion with a prominent architect in New York City who just, by the way, did the Bush Library, Presidential Library, and we were sitting in a car for a couple hours together, so I was talking to him about this project, and I asked him, I talked about this copper gutter, and he said, "Well, it wasn't, it wasn't one long run." And I said, "Yeah, it was one long run." He said, "It's gonna break. The welds break. You gotta put an expansion joint in it." This, anybody would know that. Well, that was not designed in what we did, and that's why it broke, and I'm furious about that. So here we are again, because of that failure in engineering and design, spending another 191 plus 70, $260, quarter of a million dollars, because that was incorrectly designed. You know, I, I don't know. What can we say about that? It's over, but...
I mean, it's over.
Somebody, somebody made a mistake, and it wasn't us.
We've gagged over this the whole way along, but I do think...
But it was a design, I mean, it confirms to me, it was a design flaw. This, here we are talking about bonds, well, nobody should, nobody needed to bond that because, you know, they did what they were supposed to do, but what they did is construct something that was bound to break. It had to break because of the physics of expansion.
I get all that, I have the same frustration. What do we do now?
Well, can we look into maintenance bonding and just see if there, that's, you know, if that, that's in there, and if it isn't to the degree which it affects the cost of this bid, if any at all? I mean, I can't believe that maintenance bonds are not a fairly commonplace for, you know, warranty work that goes for a decade.
Well, the maintenance bond typically covers a shorter period of time than the warranty on a product would.
Okay.
But you still need one.
Okay, good.
You know, the problem is we never, we had nothing to call it.
Right.
And my understanding is this roof failed within 36 months.
Right.
That's right.
I mean, I think it failed, it was failing when I came in 2003.
Right.
So it was finished in 2000.
And with this, and with this, we need a regular schedule of maintenance that's in the record, that forces us to look at it every...
Four years or something.
Every year and a half or two years, or whatever it is, and check the box that it actually happened, so that, you know, if we're gonna have the maintenance bond or have the ability to hold these guys, that we're actually, have some means to remember.
Patty, at the meeting...
Brian, did you say that the plans the architect prepared call for one continuous gutter?
Yes, one continuous gutter. And this architect said that was bound to fail. This is top, this is from the big firm. He said, he said, "You have to, you could go back and retrofit a expansion joint. You have to build that in." So, I mean, I can't, I'm telling you, I just can't, and we're late in the game, I just can't believe that we have a copper gutter that's failing. Copper was supposed to last a long, long time. And, and here we are looking at another 260,000. Now, this is, it's not that we, we, you know, we, it is that we have to do something, you're right, but it seems that we're not, we're not asking the right people to stand up and be counted for what they did wrong.
Okay, so is there any...
Patty, one question. Patty, we spoke two weeks ago, you were gonna check, I think, with Russ about whether we really thought legitimately we could do this, starting now and be done by winter?
Yes.
And we all sort of agreed that if he thought, we'd be okay?
Yes, he did, Marty did.
Okay.
And so did the contractor. I spoke to the contractor personally. He's ready to go next week, as long as he gets a notice to proceed.
The question remains, all of those concerns.
But I want to talk to all of you about construction management services and executive session.
All of those concerns are legitimate concerns that we've gnashed our teeth about for a long time, unless any of those suggest that what we are confronting now isn't what we ought to do and we shouldn't do it now, we need to vote.
Right. Mine, though, I mean, mine are just to make sure that the checks and balances are actually documented, they're in place and exist.
I just have zero confidence that what we're looking at is...
We sat here with Russ Waskey, the roof consultant.
And I have zero confidence, these are the same guys that brought us our current problem, and I sat on the board at that time, so you all can vote yes, but I just have, I, you know, I'm sorry, fool me twice.
Okay, what do we do?
You fooled me once.
What would you recommend instead?
You know, I think, I just don't know, I'm, you know, I always like to wait. I mean, I feel like I'd be...
We have an office that has been rendered uninhabitable by water infiltration.
Yeah.
We have carpentry work that is being...
How about you four vote yes?
[laughing] I thought that we were getting towards...
That's why we have votes, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Motion approved. 187, Brian.
Oh, 187. I'm reveling my nay. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the mayor to sign the termination agreement with Nextel of New York, Inc.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you wanna describe...
Yeah, I'll be happy to explain this. Nextel is one of six carriers currently on our cell tower. Nextel merged a while back with Sprint, and they're divesting all of their interests in their equipment and their assets on cell towers nationwide. If they terminate the lease with the village, they're obligated to pay a 12-month lease penalty for that, which they will be paying. They're also obligated to remove all of their equipment, which they'll be doing. There are some other nuances within the lease agreement that our attorney is building into the termination agreement, but assuming that we get those things in order, we would like the board to act on this so we can wrap it up.
Okay. Any other questions?
Is Verizon going on? I mean, I think actually go on and turn something on up there?
Verizon is. Eventually, they will.
Supposedly just...
They're paying rent, but they've not installed anything yet.
We could sure use that if they...
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number 188, Colleen.
Yeah, anyway, whereas the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville is aware of increasing demand for wireless communication services and the related demand for infrastructure required to provide these services, and, whereas federal law governing the provision of wireless communication services permits reasonable local regulation governing the placement, construction, and modification of wireless communication facilities, however, the board recognizes that this body of law is continually evolving and affecting the power local governments to regulate the placement of wireless communication facilities, and, whereas the village adopted a local law regulating the location of wireless telecommunication facilities used to provide personal wireless services, as defined in 47 U.S.C. 332(c)(7(c), and whereas on March 12, 2012, the village adopted a moratorium on the installation of new wireless telecommunication facilities, and commenced a review of its current law to ensure compliance with federal standards, and whereas the village has completed review of its local law governing wireless communication facilities and proposes the following amendments to ensure compliance with federal law, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves a local law amending Chapter 185 of the village code, Section 185-35.1, entitled Regulating Wireless Telecommunications, excuse me, Telecommunications Facilities as follows, as reflected in the record.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One of the things they talk about in here is escrow, and it says if you're applying for a special permit, that you would have escrow, but we had talked at one point of having escrow for just safety purposes, just anybody having something, just having, you know, the situation we had when we had the issue down at the dog park.
Right.
You know, it would have been great if we had had an escrow, and we were able to take care of that immediately. We had to wait for those people to sort of come to it, so I didn't know if that was something...
Well, we do have insurance, we do have bonds, so I don't know if I need to hold money, but I'm okay with going after them, one way or another, for any civil action that we have to go after. I appreciate that.
And the reality, I mean, the reality of that dog park situation where a couple of pals had fallen off the monopole is that we wouldn't have taken it on ourselves to make the repair anyway, it involved a crane and engineering certification.
No, but telling them that we would might have spurned them on to fix it a little quicker.
So you're comfortable, Patty, with the bonding arrangement?
I think that we're protected with the insurance requirements and the performance bond issues that we have to post.
The other comment I had was, the annual structural inspection and report, they're supposed to come to us annually. I know that hasn't been done necessarily. Should we pick a date or a month, saying that we want everybody, just so that we can follow up, instead of having everybody doing it on different months?
Yes.
It might be a better say to say, "We want it done..."
On or before a certain date.
Yeah.
I think that's a good comment. We'll build that...
That could be included in our meeting schedule.
But I just think that if we've got five or six providers, and they're all coming up with an annual date, we're not gonna know who's done it and who's not, and that's where we got into that problem in the first place.
Yeah, I know that we need to see them, they can just provide their report and...
Right.
Right. All right, anything else?
Oh, and this is a little thing, it's on page 17 where it says, the applicant has a file, something in the office, and we collect their address and telephone number, we should get their email address.
I know it's...
Okay.
That's it.
All right, with those comments...
Glad you're not my mom.
All in favor?
Aye.